Okay, good evening. We will call Tuesday, September 30th, commission meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Okay, so tonight's a little different evening. Our first meeting is 5:00 PM for budget hearing. All three commissioners are present. Michelle Morris is present. Josh should be around shortly. Nothing to add or take away from the budget, so I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Does anybody want to speak to the budget hearing? Okay, we'll close that portion, and Mr. Lloyd, the floor is yours. Those things county budget, first item.
Okay. On the pledge, I don't have anything unless they have questions. You ready for the auditing, is that what you're saying?
It's just the first one on there, so yeah, if we don't have anything on it.
So what would happen is, well, maybe I'll just go in and move it. Okay, so some of you, I think some of you attended about, probably about two weeks ago, some didn't. What happened is the budget was exceeding R and R. But the publication deadline was five days, or was five days instead of the 10-day required by state statute. So when you don't actually meet the 10-day publication period, then what happens is you revert back to R and R. Okay, so that's why we're having this hearing today. This is just a budget hearing that if you had a question, it's the last day we can have the budget hearing. We republished, and that's why we're having the hearing today. So based on our budget hearing, you were here last time. Budget hearing is basically, if you have any questions about the budget, what was published, or copies of, you know, if you come in and got a copy for, and we looked through it. But what the budget does, it's a big picture, State of Kansas forms, and basically it sets your budget authority for expenditure at the county level, and it sets the mill levy that you'll have when you get your tax data for the county portion, and it'll be at revenue-neutral rate for R and R. Okay? Any questions? Seems like we've done this like, what, five times?
Yeah.
But anyway, I think, I don't have anything to add to it, unless somebody has some questions on that portion.
Commissioners?
I had a few questions. I did, I got some documents yesterday, and so I was working through them today. And I had on the I'm gonna kind of work backwards. On the employee benefit fund, I saw that we had the increase for the KPNF, which was the 240.
Yeah.
But then I saw that it was decreased on the Blue Cross Blue Shield from the 1.4 million to 1.
Okay.
And I, with us moving into the state plan, did we ever get the projected premium for that? Because I think it's gonna go up about 300,000 to 400,000.
Okay.
So if we were at 1.4, and then we're adding 3 to 400,000, that's gonna put that at around like 1.7. So it looks like it was lower.
I, we took whatever was given to us, we took whatever was given to us and put in the budget, so.
So Blue Cross, I mean, the State of Kansas plan said it was.
Whatever was given to us by the county employees. So I'm not sure, Michelle, if you know on that.
It was just by employee count, and then it was Blue Cross gave us.
I think that's wrong. I think our premiums are gonna go up about 300,000 or 400,000.
Okay. We have almost a million in cash, so the way the budget sets up is the line items really don't matter from a state standpoint. The only number that matters on this is 3,350, bold number right down there on, and you're not on here, it's on the budget document, that 3 million, maybe on that one too. The 3,350 is the total expenditures for the budget for '26. The budget are the actual, the total expenditures in '24 was 1,982. And the total projected in '25 that we're in right now is 2,500,000, and we are almost 800,000 over that with budget authority. So it seemed like to me that we would be okay. Now, as to why it's a million, and it's 1,710,000 the first year, and the middle column is 1.4.
Which one are you on?
Well, the actual budget, employee benefit.
Okay.
So it should be, it should, I don't know what else on those columns, that's why Lauren sent you, that's your.
Yeah, she took the adopted '25 budget and then put, to be able to compare the adopted budget to what the '26 final was. And so it, and that showed the increase or decrease of each of the lines.
Right.
So I just saw that it was decreased by 430,000, and I think we're actually gonna be.
The question I have is that 1,430 after, even though it was the actual budget, the amount that was put in the '25 budget. And if it's not, if it's less than 1,400,000, because I don't know, '24 is only 1,710,000, and that's 400, almost 400,000 more in the middle column. So to me, what that would be is maybe that was overstated, and that would be cash carryover to the '26 column. The budget only gonna spend maybe, I don't know how much went up in '25. Did it go up when you signed?
As far as the state program premium, or what does it cost?
Meaning for '26?
'25, what do you mean, is it, is it the same?
I think it would have been for employees, or the employees were being.
And that 1,400,000 is pretty accurate of where you're gonna be, okay. And then it went back down for '26?
No, it's gonna go up about 300,000 or 400,000, because we moved from an independent plan, we moved to going into the state plan, and so the premiums are gonna go up quite a bit, and so I don't know if we've planned.
We have about a million dollars to play with. I can change that number, it's not gonna matter for budget purposes, because we have to stick with the 3,300,000.
The budget authority.
That was in there, but I can change a line item if you want that for the final budget. If 1,400,000 is closer to what, after you change, when did you, did you just change or gonna change?
In January.
January, '26?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, when you change that, whatever you do.
Yeah, I don't know, we just, I think we just plugged in the numbers based on what they, what they told you, yeah. I mean, so I don't know what that number will look like in the end.
But again, like you said, we have plenty of overhead, so the work trouble might change.
The, yeah, the total budget authority number will be the same regardless.
So if we prove the budget authority amount tonight, do we still have time to go back if we wanna refine and look for areas where we can lower spending?
The way the state law works is, once you've assigned the budget, you can go back now to the end of the '26 budget and allocate the lines any way you want. Now, I don't usually recommend that. I would recommend that when you start 1126, hopefully, I know sometimes in the past year, we've been clearing up into February trying to get those numbers between the lines, but the way the state law reads is that you actually would be able to adjust those even into, just because you have in the budget, like if there was a line in here, there's just no budget, it doesn't mean it's gonna get spent. It just means that's what you're projecting, because it's an estimate. So yeah, you could, you could go back. Now, word against Harry is if you've set a department head budget, that's an elected official, and there, and then budget gets approved, then that potentially cannot be changed. It would take an attorney, attorney general's opinion, like the Lincoln County case for the sheriff several years ago. But all the other lines, as long as you don't change the, you can't change the total budget authority, but you can change the lines inside the budget. I don't, I don't think you guys got all the, there's two extra spreadsheets.
Oh, did she not send them to everybody?
We just sent them to you.
Why would they just send them to one?
I haven't, we're bound by R and R. I mean, the minute that, we, the minute we failed to hold it, or publish properly, we were bound to R and R, so it's not a lot more you're gonna do about it unless you wanna cut over, and I think we're pretty tight spending anyhow.
We get full room to the other two, and so it's not, they just said they didn't, they didn't need this.
There's just a lot, this was the stuff that we talked about at the beginning of the budget cycle, and so I'd asked for these for several weeks, but I just got them late Friday night.
We sent them back in September, probably, or August.
I didn't get those. Like this one here, I just got on Friday afternoon, so I actually got it on Monday. And then this Excel might be updated. This one might have been sent out, but I don't know if it was updated, but.
This one other one is the one you're talking about, is from the, and I saw it, it's the one, like the website, one, the one we compared last year's budget, final budget, to the adopted '26 budget or the proposed adopted. Is that what you're saying by line item?
Yes. Now, on the budget, adopted budget '25, I don't know if it's the budget authority or if it's the actual, what we approved for spending, because those are two different things, and so.
The actual, that column is by line item, it looks like, when I was looking at it, when she sent it to you. That one is by line item, and that one would be right off of the final adopted budget for 2025. Now, say that it didn't get changed, you know, sometime in the first part of '25, I can't, I don't think it's been, she just dropped in what the final adopted budget was for 2025.
But we won't know the actual numbers on that until sometime next year.
Yes.
Well, isn't this line, it says adopted budget, it's not, it's the actual budget, not the actual spending?
The actual, no, 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 the actual budget adopted by.
For '25.
Right. The spending is on the other Excel spreadsheet that you have.
Yeah.
And it's also on your, your records, or your, somewhere.
Yeah, so, some of the questions I had, so like in the courthouse general, on some of the lines where there was a pretty significant increase, is there an explanation for some of those? Like in the courthouse general for commodities, on the commodity line item, they went up like 118,000?
Which one, sorry, which one's that?
On the courthouse general, under commodities. The increase was like $118,000.
The budget was the same as last year, the way I see it here, 228,000, actually spent was only 118,024. Is that what you're asking?
So there's a line item on the courthouse general under commodities, says it was 7,800, and then for '26, it's 125,000. So it shows that it went up by 118,000. So when I saw the increases, I was just, I'm curious what those are when there's such a big jump.
Okay, so this is the extra worksheet you're working off of. I see the 7,800, that may have got put in that way, that that's not, I don't think that's, the way the budget, if you look at the actual budget in the middle column for 2025, it's 228,000 and 228,000, and actual for '24 was 118,000, and sometimes that line item is.
Which page are you on?
You say courthouse, oh, I'm sorry, 82,000. That's why we have, we have three worksheets going on.
So here's the '25 adopted, and here's the final budget for '26. So each line item, she put what was the budget for '25, and then what the request was for '26. So on the commodity line item, it says 7,800, but then it says for '26, it's 125,000, so it's an increase of 118,000.
Yeah, that's, that was probably how it got finalized last year, but that's not the final. That's the line item inside. I'm not sure why it changed that much.
Well, I mean, part of the whole, you guys going through the budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, you're gonna take from certain lines, if you have a line that underspent by 100, and a line that's overspent by 80, you're gonna make those adjustments. So there are gonna be some that may have a pretty substantial increase.
Yes, so, the question she's asking, basically what it comes down to is under state law. We could, we could actually overspend the courthouse maintenance total budget and still not have a budget violation. And there are gonna be line items that aren't going to, they're gonna be over or under, we do the best. Yes, I'm not sure why that one is showing on the extra Excel spreadsheet.
So this just doesn't match what's in there, is what you're saying?
And I'm not, I'm not sure why I have to ask them why that 7,800 shows that way. Because if you look on here, commodities on courthouse general, I was looking at the long line when I was talking, 118,000. Commodities on courthouse general on page 6C, on the actual budget, '24 is 85,246 for commodities. The middle column is 82,800, and the '26 budget is 125,800.
Yeah, this is 7,800.
Yeah, so that extra Excel spreadsheet.
So then, so what I got here that I worked on might not be accurate.
There may be, may be some difference. I'll have to ask Lauren, trying to go back to her, make those extra worksheets up. We've been, we make errors, but that, the actual budget over here that we're looking at, looks like it's fairly reasonable. I mean, there are changes like 125 down to 82, and that could just be something that, you know, that was after '26.
And then, another question, the election budget is moved into the general, I guess it used to be outside.
Yeah, it's had its own fund.
Is that something by statute that was changed, or what's the reason for?
No, that was a request that it moved there so that we don't have, I don't know, maybe you should answer. It was moved there to, I don't answer. So what happened is there's mandates by the federal government to do the election machine, vote, you know, just all the different things. And it is kind of a hard one to have out on its own fund, because one year, like it's coming here, will be a two-year, I mean, it'll be the second year of the voting, and it'll be a bigger year, whereas this year was not a bigger year, and it's just hard to go loop up and down, up and down. And I have an area county that did this too. They cleared the general, because there's more flexibility, and because you don't know what's coming, there's mandates. I think there's 18 different ones that you already have to, and election is a, is a tough one.
So, on that, back, so it's being moved to the general fund, so if it runs over, it's just gonna use extra money?
And you don't have to worry about.
So on the personnel line item, and I was looking back on the Excel spreadsheet, most of the personnel line item range between 10,000 and 29,000. So do we know why we have 109,000 in there?
Because you added a, Michelle, you had another person, or you switched her salary from.
She's looking at credit card cash.
She what? Did I say personnel serves at 109,429?
Are you looking at 10 or?
On 6F, it says 109,429, and then on this Excel spreadsheet, when I went back, in like '21, personnel was about 10,000, the next year it was 14,000, and '23 it was 12,000, and in '24 with the bigger election, it was 29,000 for personnel. So I don't know where the 109.
109 is taking the actual election clerk and.
So that's eight.
All your election workers, airport workers, and stuff.
And where did it used to be paid out of?
So if you look, if you look on page 10, and there's commodities of 106,739. I can't remember on your, all these counties run together, but on yours, did you switch them from 1099 to W2, or are you still going to 1099?
Uh, 1099, they're all the ones with the two's.
They're what?
And the Y has to go to.
Yes, a lot of counties have, that's what.
Who's they?
And.
The secretary of state.
Secretary of state, no, they're the ones with the two's.
So they would've been paid, probably out of different line item, and so what she's done here is taken that portion, and I don't have those numbers, you know, I know, but when we moved it over there, it went to personnel service. And I know about our county just asking that, they just switched last year, when we adopted there, they switched to W2.
So that's about an $80,000 increase. Over the highest. So 2024 was the presidential election, it was about 29,000.
No, the common, yeah, so.
I'm just talking personnel.
Personnel, yes.
In the, in the election, so I was just curious where the 80,000. So did, you're saying your election deputy clerk, you're paying her entire salary out of the election fund? And how much is that? Did your clerk personnel line item go down that amount? Do you know if that.
Well, she's asking questions about the election.
No, no, I didn't know on that.
It's on page 10. So this increase reflects the actual spent, right? Not the '24, that may look like that's all we spent, because previously when we had it on a different line, we were underfunded, and we had to find funding elsewhere, so this number would reflect the actual total. So with all of your election workers, your election clerk, all the people involved that drew a paycheck, that's what that number reflects. Because as you remember, or may remember, going through in the past, there were a lot of Rob Peter to pay Paul. So the line item's going over, instead of letting it go over, we would find it somewhere else and supplement it. And what this does is, we're actually showing the budget as spent, we're actually reflecting the new budget, sorry, from the information as spent. That's why you're seeing some big increases. At the end of the day, it's all within the budget that was approved that is set by the R and R.
I hear you. I'm just, the document here is the Excel spreadsheet that shows the actual spent.
We've already proved that that might not be, the documents you're working off may have mistakes.
So if you look on, here's another way to look at it. If you look on page 10 again, for the election fund for '24, '24 would've been one of the larger years, because it was the presidential election. So the total expenditures on the election fund on page 10 at the top is 136,411, total expenditures. If you look over in the general fund where it got switched to, the total is 166,975. And what I'm guessing that difference is, is the clerk's, or the clerk's salary difference of a normal operating election fund budget. Does that make, does that make sense? Because in total, the line items may not match.
Right.
But in total, you're only increasing the election fund by 30,000, and that's because you switched employee from your clerk's budget to your election fund budget. from your clerk's budget to your election fund budget.
So the hundred and six went from commodities to personnel?
It could've, I don't know, I have that in front of me, uh.
Well, I'm just reading off page ten.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying.
So it's got the personnel for twenty four was twenty nine thousand, five eighty eight, which matches this Excel spreadsheet. And they have commodities at one oh six. So I guess it's about an eighty thousand dollar difference in the personnel line. Which seems like a lot.
I don't, I don't know without, I just took the numbers that were given to us.
But your budget authority for that, the total expenditures is within spitting distance, I mean.
Total expenditures.
Yeah.
Well, that's my question, is, is that are the commodities a hundred and six thousand? If that's accurate for twenty four, what's the budget made in for the next two? This one has the commodities of twenty one.
I mean, the main thing is that you have the, uh, not just the budget authority, but you have the cash to cover the budget authority. I mean, I don't know, you, you don't have to spend your total budget authority.
Oh, no, and I would hope we wouldn't be spending the budget, but there's a budget authority and then there's what we approve and spending, and those are two different things.
On some departments, probably.
Yeah, I think we're kind of making the difference up here.
And then, uh, after the general fund, you go down to the road and bridge maintenance? Road and bridge. On the spreadsheet that I was given. The, the personnel line items, it was in administration and then it moved to personnel, is that something we're just relabeling, or do we know what the difference is?
On A B, under budget. And what were you?
In twenty five, it shows that it was six hundred and sixty thousand for administration. And then for twenty six, it's fifty three thousand.
That's only the commodities one.
And here it says administration.
I'm not sure that, that final, that worksheet there, she may have said, I'm not sure it's all, I, I don't know, I can't tell.
It could be previous worksheet that this is being made stop up.
I, I'm not sure on that. That's what the problem is, is doing three different, you know, doing the budget, doing an Excel spreadsheet, and doing another Excel spreadsheet. I'm, I'm not sure on that.
I just, I spent quite a bit of time on this, so for it not to be accurate, it's frustrating. Because I would look at this, ask questions, look at that, but if the answer is, well, it's just wrong on the page.
I will, I will check it, and I'll get it on, if you find that.
I mean, the dollar amount for everything in total is gonna be similar to what it was last year and the year before on account of staying revenue neutral, right? I mean, that's the way it works.
Okay.
Uh, I had a couple other questions. Then on the back of this. I hadn't seen this before, and I don't know what this is.
That is what we're required to put in because of CPA, absolutely putting together the budget information for you as a commissioner.
And have we done this before? I don't remember ever seeing that.
It's always been, when the final budget comes, we're supposed to have that in there. We're making assumptions, we're going off of your management, and especially because we're doing the audit also, we can't make management assumptions. We have to take the numbers you have.
Anything else? You're gonna need to, your floor is beginning.
I'm gonna make one statement, and I don't need to be pointing fingers at anybody, but the Excel spreadsheets are the only, you're the only county I do that for. And most systems are set up on your accounting systems to have all that information that you can pull and look at every line item. And I, I know that C I C has that, it's just a matter of getting it set up. It's so much more accurate than having Excel spreadsheets because it pulls from the system, uh, once we get, hopefully get it done, pulls from the system. And the other thing is, is everything you've asked, we went through several times. I, I don't know how I was, I mean, I know you called me a couple times, but some of the meetings you weren't at, we did talk about all those things, so that's really hard. Now trying to answer it, I'm just being very truthful, it's very hard.
Yes, those meetings were scheduled when I wasn't available.
Well, that's, I'm not, I'm not.
So I know you were here, but I wasn't here during those meetings because they got scheduled when I said I wasn't available.
Good?
I'm, I'm good. But in the long run, it goes back to revenue neutral, uh, the total budget authority can't change, the mill levy's not gonna change. Yes, there may be some line items that use commission visit from now till the end of the year to say this should be maybe a little different. You change those on your orders.
Right.
But the adopted budget stays at the total budget authority and the mill levy. Does that make?
Uh, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
So as they work on specific expenditure allocations, with respect to departments, they're, the only thing they're approving today is the mill levy and the total spending authority.
They're signing that the budget was approved to be able to file it at the state and to actually have a mill, mill levy so they can use the tax statement.
But if, but at some point, the budget for departments are set up, and.
They, they could change the departments, the elected, like, that's for you, I think for you guys, the elected officials potentially couldn't be changed if the adopted budget's set as of now.
So the adopted budget includes the breakout.
Yes, by departments, yeah. But any other, any other line item without going over the budget authority or that can be changed uh, when you actually take it from your budget and put it into your operating system, your, your system.
Mr. Cherry, are you gonna, are you looking at doing those two separate, the county budget and the sewer budget?
Yes, yeah. So, uh, at this time, I just need a motion to approve the budget as presented to be sent to the state.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both?
Aye.
Motion carries. Cash. All right, Osage County District Su, District One Sewer Budget.
Any questions?
One second here, glasses on.
Take this big one right here.
There you go. Okay, Osage County Sewer District One, any questions on this?
There's not a lot of fluctuation in this at all.
No.
I mean.
Need a motion to approve signing the Osage County Sewer District One as presented to be sent to the state.
So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Motion carries. All right, Scott, the floor again.
Okay, so this is the twenty three audit, uh, we have copies there. Uh, I am, if you just stop me if you have questions, but I'm just gonna give you highlights because a lot of these findings have been on over the last, probably four years, five years. So you have a stable document, it's called a governing body communication letter. The first couple pages are boilerplate, three pages. If you look at the bottom of page number four, you see significant deficiencies. Uh, we have this one pretty well taking care of its financial statement reporting and other supplemental information. If you flip to the next page, how we do this, Brandon, since you're first one, what we do is we take any findings from the prior year and roll them forward. And then we give a status on those findings and tell if it's got taken care of, or if it's still.
Flowing, yeah.
Still needs to be done. So perfect example in this first one, there were staff, and I think even Heather may have went to a K mag event, Kansas Miss Baller Accounting Committee, and that's how your financial statements are put together, and that's what this is asking for. The only thing now that's missing is a policy that is adopted for your financial statement process, and you can get your copy. I know we've got, we can get that for you, and that will take care of that. So you can see, there's a status on page four, five, I guess it's.
Five.
And there's a, there's a, uh, it says adopt a policy. The rest of these have been on here for several, like timely bank reconciliation for county treasurer. Uh, this has been on here since two thousand and fifteen, and you'll see the, still considered an issue in twenty three, computer control issues. These are things, and we actually missed them out in here for each of the years, of things that we found, uh, in this process. And that is still considered, uh, present. You go to the next page, uh, you actually have policy procedures, these are things that we recommend and probably should be policy procedures uh, put in place, and, but there was no single audit in twenty three, so that's one of the reasons we put those in there because the federal interim controls uh, recommend that you have, because we went through a COVID period.
Yeah.
And we should have those sort of things in place. Uh, the bottom of that page is county health department deposits not made timely, and you'll see the status, we noted again in twenty three that the deposits were not being made in a timely manner, however, it was noted that the office staff is making attempts to not leave large amounts of cash on hand. Our recommendation is typically to get a deposit within one week at the longest. Uh, but if it's a lot of cash, it should be deposited immediately because cash is very much gonna be removed. Uh, if you go to page seven, uh, this goes into more details of policy procedures, and these are more like your operational procedures. The other ones relate more to federal standards, but, uh, these are ones, and you're not, a lot of places we recommend this, they have not got those taken care of, that takes, takes a while to put those together. Budget violations on page, uh, page eighty, uh, these were ones in the prior years, and actually for twenty three, there were no budget violations. That one will come off. So that's a good thing. Cash basis violations, we would overspend the unencumbered cash by an encumbrance or whatever it might be. Uh, you'll see the condition there, and then in twenty three, the status, uh, there was a violation in the bond interest fund, the county treasurer auto fund, and, uh, some of the agency funds, like where you collect for the state of Kansas or whatever, uh, just turning it over to the state. Maybe more got sent in what the cash was in that agency fund. Publications not made, you can see those there, there are quarterly publications, the Financial Sunday were not published in twenty three, and we spell that out there. Uh, bank reconciliations, uh, this was actually through last year. We noted the bank reconciliation, the status there, we noted bank reconciliations for the twenty three year were not completed, so twenty five, still considered an issue. So they did get completed, twenty three, and even part, a lot of twenty four has been rec, there's still some.
Sure.
Problems, but we're trying to get through twenty four so we can get that one finalized also. Current year points, uh, is journal entry testing, uh, due to, due to staff changes, we were unable to complete a journal entry testing as our request went unanswered, so we can select the same. Uh, what that would be is like, if there's any journal entries that go from one fund to another, then that should be signed off on by two people, not just one. You don't want somebody being able to move money from a fund to another fund without a second approval. And we also recommend that they probably, well, all cases, it comes to you as a sign off, and I'm not sure that's been done, but that's something we recommend. Daily envelope procedure not completed, what this would be, would be the county clerk and the county treasurer. Uh, this is probably since the early nineteen hundreds that there's a daily envelope that's, that's started in the county treasurer's office. What that is, is it actually takes all the checks, the cash, that daily activity, and puts it in that envelope with all the receipts uh, from each department, wherever the money comes in, and then they balance that to the bank. If it's done, it's balanced to the bank accounts and cash on hand, and then it's sent over to the county treasurer, or county clerk's office, and they take and detail it out on their side to make sure it's reconciled. This has been hit and miss for the last, probably three, three or four years.
Sure.
Uh, the tax rule reconciliation, uh, that is something that, uh, has been kind of hit and miss too. What that is, is the tax rule is, the abstract is set by the county clerk. Any added or abated to that number that, that rolls over from the clerk is the total, so it's adjusted. And then that total is collected by the treasurer, and so you have collections, and then, uh, whatever's not collected is delinquent. So that's the reconciliation, it's, it's really kind of like an accounts receivable if you're running a business or something like that. You're reconciling, here's my billings, here's my collections, and here's my outstanding, you know.
How does that, uh, change from an accounting standpoint when the tax sale occurs?
Yeah, so when the tax sale occurs, you have, as I said, you have delinquent property of three hundred thousand, I'm just using a number. And a tax sale occurs, and all those get put back on the tax rule, and that reconcile, it'll flow through, flow through the delinquent tax, and they'll go back to, maybe not zero, but it may go back to, uh.
Is that a journal entry that would just say negative?
No, so they, they would actually go into their, each, each tax act, each, each property that's on there, and they would put it back on the tax rule. Because if, if it's delinquent, it, the system kicks it into a delinquency and is shown in delinquent real estate.
But it's basically writing out bad debt once it reverses to.
Right. Yeah, that, that, I don't wanna, there's a lot of people waiting, they're not listening to Iowa report, but I can explain how we used to do it way back. It's, it's changed quite a bit, but the guy that I took over from forty two years ago, he actually would take and list out every one of those as is delinquent. And when a tax sale happened, he went back through and made sure every one of those was actually addressed appropriately. Uh, auditing has changed a lot in forty two years. Next page, uh, last page is fee offices, uh, who requested adoption of information from various departments across multiple, across the county multiple times during our audit work, many of whom went unresponded to. Um, what we do on those, some of those may not be material to your financial statement, that's an audit term material. Uh, but we'd like to have a rotation basis at least looking at them, so when we request, we would like to see the information to make sure it's, it's appropriate. And then the last one.
I have a question, what kind of documents were you requesting that you didn't get?
I don't have this in front of me, but I would guess it'd be like, if you were, let's just say, um, one of the ones in the past that we've looked at is historical study, uh, they're an appropriation of you, you know, they're actually appropriated uh, out of your budget, um, it'd be all those special offices like that, uh, that we, we would look at that was actually, um, had accounting rooms.
So it's like reports, just running reports, or what is it?
It's everything. We usually, in a box, we usually have, they bring it in the box and we look at it.
And you didn't get those?
No, so.
Any of them?
And I can get you the list, I don't have that with me right now, but I can get you a list of the ones. But that has been fairly common, uh, in trying to get audit work. has been fairly common, uh, in trying to get audit work, work done in certain respects.
Are those expenditures running through the county on all of this?
Uh, like they're historical site, we're running through the county, they get an appropriation. And I'm just using the number, I don't remember the, I can look on them, but 25,000 say they get appropriation. But what we're looking at is to make sure not only did they get the appropriation, but, but actually, you know, making sure their certificates of deposit and all those are accurate. We actually, uh, I'm, I'm not sure on that one, but we confirm to make sure the bank accounts match up to what they're showing on the report.
Are they a county department?
No. They are, they're again, an appropriation of the county. Be like the soil conservation, tho, those types where they're appropriation. The historical site, for some reason here, has always been looked at in the past.
So you can give us a list of the reports you were hitting?
Yeah, I can, I can, uh.
Are they all appropriated funds or are they some that are county departments?
I don't know that, but they're, they're the county one, yeah. But it's probably fairly minimal. These aren't, these aren't the main offices. These are, these offices that have always been looked at. And I'll, I'll have to get you a list.
Okay, very good.
Okay, the only other thing I was gonna show you here is in the bound document. The thing we are, we are saying here is we're giving an opinion on unencumbered cash in total and receipts and expenditures in total. Uh, so what that means is if you look on page four and five, this is the only statement that you have in your audit report. The rest are schedules. So we're giving an opinion on this the way it's presented right here. Making sure that the top part is right off of your computer system, uh, on the left page and then the top of the right page there on page five, and then we reconcile it to the bank. And you'll see over in the very right-hand column, there's 17,978,439 is the total on the computer system. And down at the bottom, that is the total in the bank. The one thing that people don't quite understand, they go, why do you've got so much money sitting around? You see that bracketed number, the second one from the bottom is 10,000, 10,563. What that is, is that's money that you've collected. Most of it's tax money. You've collected and you're waiting for it to be distributed. So you have it on hand in 1231.
It's already earmarked, is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's already earmarked and it'll be distributed at, on January 20th. So that's, that's why a county's financial statement does look like they have a lot of money sitting there, but it's not really all their, it's other people's. School districts, uh, other places. But that's what we give the opinion on and, um, I, I don't know, the rest is we've covered through budgets, through audits, uh, there's notes for financial statements. For example, if you look on page 14, this was something that come out that got removed. There was no budget violation. So if you were wanting to know if there was a budget violation in 23, you would look on page 14. And there's no unbracketed numbers in the right-hand column, so that means there's no budget violations on page 14. And that's where that comes from. And that shows the total expenditures compared to budget authority like we talked. Okay? And then the rest of these are line items compared to 22 on every one of the funds that we went through many times over the last, okay? Couple summers, actually. 23 would have been in the, 23 would have been the first column in the 25 budget. Okay? If you wanted to know what the agency money is, you can go back to page 59. And this shows how that $10 million is made up. So it's made up of a lot of things. It could be state money that's still sitting in your, in your account, bank accounts, waiting to be sent. But everything there on the right-hand column is what makes up the 10,563 that I showed, we show up on first page bracket. Okay, I don't, I don't have anything else, so I'm just glad we got 23 caught up. We're working on 24. It has definitely been a challenge, uh, but we'll get there. Any other questions?
ARPA grant fund, was that mostly distributed, was that a used in or was it?
It was all, yeah, it was all closed out. I think there was a journal entry made, but it was all closed out in 123124. If you didn't get it closed out in 123124, potentially you could get it clawed back from the federal government. But it was all, I think we worked with the, I can't remember who, the ARPA guy. So we've got it all reconciled and the journal entry made, I think it's been cleaned up, yeah.
Yes, one final question on the audit recommendations.
Yeah.
If you had to highlight the top three for me to?
Here's a, okay, I don't want to take too much more time, but here's something I had happen in a city and I think it might work well there. I was thinking about this driving up here, okay? So what I can do is give you the electronic document there that shows the findings. And in the city, I had them drop it in Excel and put every one of those findings down here, down the side. And then put a column of who's responsible to get this, this finding taken care of. And then make them accountable for getting that finding taken care of. So that's the overall picture. The biggest things I would say that, that really makes it difficult between the treasurer and the clerk and getting an audit done is the actual not having day balances or not having the banks reconcile. Now, bless her heart, Linda has helped a bunch. Uh, she's the only reason we got the 23 really done because there was a lot of moving pieces. I think we've got that one. 24, there are still, I think, some differences. Going forward to 25, I think you've switched now to talking about some, one of you. The ADP is now the new other payroll. That's been kind of a problem in 25. We're not on that yet, but that's something. But I think the biggest thing is bank reconciliations and the day statement. Because the day statement is an incredible internal control.
Yeah.
So, the, what literally happened, you know, you know this, but the receipts come in the treasurer's office. They deposit them, they put them in that day statement. The expenditures come out of the county clerk's office. And so that, when they're done, that, in the paper world, back in the old days, that book was put on, you put on two pages and it was reconciled every day. Uh, the computer system has the reconciliation process, but, uh, we're just trying to get banks reconciled right now.
Well, it seems like a lot of the recommendations, other than adopting policies and procedures.
Those are, I'm not, I'm not worried about those as much.
A lot of the recommendations are dependent upon those two things.
That's right, absolutely.
Because you can't have quarterly statements published in the newspaper.
We never can do that statement one. And when I show you, where the computer's up here and the bank's down here, if we never get the day statements reconciled or the banks reconciled, there's no way to reconcile the computer system to the, to the actual banks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Very good.
They got, they got, listen to them.
Yeah, you got an earful.
Budget 101, right?
Yeah.
It's good. A lot of, I mean, a lot of everybody gets to see that.
The FEOs answer. I don't know that. I'll ask Lauren why then. I'm not sure on that one, the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, anything further?
Close, adjourn, whatever.
I need a motion to adjourn the budget area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We have about five minutes until we'll move into the next one, so if anyone needs a brief recess, please feel free.